Special Town Council Meeting, December 4th, 2025. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lopez.
Present.
For the record, she's joining us virtually. Councilmember Keel.
Present.
Councilmember Freund. Councilmember Freund, can you hear me? He's joined virtually. I'm not sure if he can hear me. Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Searcher.
Here.
Mayor Poguda.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. First item, call the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. At the conclusion of Call of the Public, the council may respond to criticism, ask staff to review a matter commented upon, or ask that matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. And just to even add to that, you guys can talk about whatever you want. You have three minutes. Just know that. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So we do have nineteen people registered. I will call the first four names. We have Carl Marsh, Sandy Graham, Julie Ruddle, and Bruce Evans.
And folks, before we get started with the being nineteen, there's a good chance that someone maybe before you says the same comments you're gonna say. So let's just try not to repeat those. You can just say, hey, I concur with that and just kind of keep moving along. So appreciate it. Come on down, guys.
And I think we have one more. So there's twenty now.
Ooh, twenty. Good round number. All right, now it's your turn, guys. Who got their name called? Ms. Graham, floor is yours.
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy Graham, a Prescott Valley resident. We do not have a YMCA in Prescott Valley. That's been asked many times. The question is, are the taxpayers willing to have their taxes raised in order to build a center with or without a pool to be operated by the Prescott YMCA? The Prescott YMCA is asking for a half a million dollars yearly to operate this facility, which would be paid by the taxpayers. To use the facility, one would also have to pay YMCA's membership fees. Another request of some is for the YMCA Child Care Center. Some feel this would solve their childcare needs. The Prescott YMCA has been operating a state-licensed childcare center in Prescott Valley since the fall of 2023. Note, the opening of this center was at least two months prior to the town council voting on a partnership with the YMCA. I would encourage all of you to ask the Prescott YMCA how many children are enrolled in the Prescott Valley YMCA school-age program. Is it meeting those needs that many think it would? As of the summer of 2025, Prescott Valley had thirty-three state-licensed childcare centers in the Boys and Girls Club after-school program. The total of children that can be cared for by these providers are 2,592. The big question is, can they find staff to provide the care for their max limit of children in their centers? One way to have a YMCA in Prescott Valley is to have the Prescott YMCA open a branch under their umbrella. It seems like with operating a childcare center in Prescott Valley, they've already opened that umbrella. I have heard several times from Prescott YMCA representatives the following: They are exceptional at fundraising. They have operated a profitable YMCA for over fifty years. They turn no one away. All scholarship requests are fulfilled. Seems that the solution to having a Y in Prescott Valley is for Prescott YMCA to spread its wings, raise money, and build. I feel that Prescott Valley could utilize the beautiful Boys and Girls Club more for their recreation programs. The town could exercise the IGA.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I think I'm slightly out of order. I apologize. Bruce Evans, Quillwood Meadows. And I want to emphasize, I'm speaking this afternoon as a private citizen, not as a planning and zoning commissioner. About sixteen months ago, I had a guest column in the Daily Tribune, sorry, Daily Courier, Prescott Valley Tribune, called Think It Through. And I want to reiterate some of what I wrote there because I've noticed over the last two to three years, actually, this town is being dominated by agendas that are full of lies and fear-mongering. There's several reasons we love living in PV. There's the climate, the geography, and I think in large measure, traditional values, if you look at the voting patterns during partisan elections. There are two or three PACs that have been very active in spreading lies, in fear-mongering, and in just denying the truth. And I'd just like to admonish people that are listening to these PACs to think it through. Look at what they are saying. Do a factual analysis. Do a little research. And I do think these PACs are following a national and regional model called Indivisible, and I would encourage people to Google those. And the agenda of a couple of the PACs is mirroring that philosophy, especially with a webpage that came out by PVC very recently. We're being inundated with irresponsible reflexive negativity, lies during the Amazon suit. Won't accuse anybody of anything, but one exhibit included a document that not exists for five days after it was supposed to be submitted. Unless they hooked up with Doctor Who on the TARDIS and went forward, I don't know how they got that document. We've got them talking about silicosis from the government tank site. People working on the crusher and the processor don't have to have masks. It's physically impossible for no dust to be spread farther away as dust. And now I hear they've got a doctor, who's an eye doctor, talking about lung problems from silicosis. Maybe he could talk about glaucoma from silica dust. I'd rather depend on a pulmonologist. Finally, I'd like to raise the issue of a council member who is spending the next two months on a beach in Florida while being paid his monthly stipend by the town of Prescott Valley. That's inexcusable. We didn't elect somebody to phone it in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Carl Marsh. Well, first of all, mayor and council members, thank you for this time. I live in Prescott Valley, and I served on the Prescott Valley Community Recreation Facility Advisory Committee. I'm speaking today for myself and for fellow committee member Kay Gorman, who unfortunately is sick in bed at home. You're going to be considering four options later this afternoon. The first two concerning the old pool, to me, are not economically wise. Therefore, as you consider whether the new community recreation facility should be operated by Parks and Recreation or by the YMCA, there are two essential points we hope you'll weigh carefully. First, the YMCA can offer a far broader, deeper range of programs than any municipal department. Parks and Recreation does excellent work, but it simply cannot match the Y's capacity. Built over generations to deliver comprehensive, high-quality programs for all ages, the Y brings established expertise in youth development, family programs, aquatics, adult wellness, chronic disease support, senior fitness, and accredited childcare. This is one week's worth of programs from the YMCA in Prescott. For kids, ninja and jujitsu classes, youth basketball leagues, esports gaming, group swim lessons from six months to age twelve, gymnastics, Arizona YMCA Youth and Government Program, and more. And for adults, personal trainers, Parkinson's exercise, aerial silks training, think Cirque du Soleil, group exercises, yoga, zumba, cycling, balancing, stretching, senior fitness, and many more. Aquatic center, open swimming, exercise classes, lap swimming, aerobics, and more. Gymnasium, open gym, volleyball, pickleball, basketball, stretching and fitness, and more. And of course, the weight rooms are open all the time. These programs run from five in the morning till seven at night. They run over seven days a week. This is what transforms a building into a true community hub, a place where toddlers learn to swim, teens discover mentorship, and adults strengthen their health, and seniors find connection and purpose. As a senior myself, I want to speak from the heart. The YMCA's programs keep people like me active, independent, and socially connected. Their balanced classes, wellness coaching, swim programs, and senior groups don't just improve health, they restore joy, confidence, and belonging. I can tell you personally, these programs change lives. The Parks and Rec model simply cannot deliver this full spectrum. Second, the committee was not unanimous in opposing childcare, and childcare should be included. When the committee's findings were presented, council was told there was unanimous agreement to exclude childcare. That was not accurate. Kay and I and others strongly advocated for childcare because the need in Prescott Valley is urgent and undeniable. Families are struggling, pardon me, parents. So.
Mr. Marsh, we're gonna, I mean, we have a lot of speakers today, so I'm gonna have to cut you off.
I have two more sentences.
Go for it.
Only the YMCA has accreditation staffing and infrastructure to provide affordable, high-quality childcare at scale. Parks and Rec cannot fill this role. Including childcare isn't a luxury, it's an act of service to our working families, to children's futures, and to the economic health of our town. This is a moment to choose a model that truly meets the needs of the people who live here and will live here in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Clerk.
Julie.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good morning, or good afternoon, I should say. Ditto. Everything he said, I agree with. I'm a product of the Y. I was raised by a single mom with three kids. And if we didn't have the Y where I came from, I don't know how I would have turned out. It taught me sportsmanship, it taught me community and how to give back to communities. So it was really important. The other thing I'm gonna add is I came from Payson, and in about 2008, we tried to get a YMCA in Payson. We were gonna do it in correlation with the Boys and Girls Club. There's nothing much that you can do for kids in Payson. Unfortunately, it went before a vote and was turned down. Just this November, they tried to pass a recreation center in the Y. Was gonna cost, I think, around $27 million. It was voted down by seventy-two percent. Guess what they're doing now? They're going back to the original plan, which was a Taylor Pool, and they're bringing back in the Y. We could have avoided all that and not had to wait this long by just going with the Y. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk.
Okay, the next four names are William Hathaway, Stephen Polk, Wayne Bennett, and Damon Alton.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Max Hathaway. I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. The development agreement stripped to assassins is essentially a land donation conditioned on a zoning map change. Each party is to receive some value out of that transaction. The question is, how much value is each party getting? Is it proportionate or is it not? The Arizona State Constitution is quite clear. The gift clause says that a town or municipality may not enter into a transaction with a private entity if the private entity receives a grossly disproportionate value. The value that the Fane family will receive immediately from the development agreement is a rezoning of a forty-acre parcel that is now vacant. That land now cannot be mined. It can be used to develop twenty-five homes on about 1.6 acre per home. I don't know what that value is, but we ought to know what it is in order to understand how much value the Fanes will receive when they are able to mine that parcel. It's gonna be a very large amount of money. What does a town get out of this? As of now, there's a big question mark. Exhibit A3 is empty, it's blank. We don't know what the designated portion of the West Fane Park site is that's gonna be donated. Could be forty acres, it could be over a hundred acres. I don't know, maybe you do. You should know. At any rate, that land, however large or small it is, will be donated with a strict limitation. The town cannot use it for anything other than a park, which in and of itself is fine. No commercial developments, no residential developments. So you must ask yourself, how much is that worth? I don't know. There's been no appraisal done. But there will be an appraisal done about a year after the dust settles, and that's gonna be for tax purposes. And that appraisal is gonna be based on the best and highest use of the land that is donated. That's gonna be mining. I'm pretty confident. So you're gonna have an immediate disparity between what the town received and the benefit it received, even though it's the same parcel of land, and the benefit to the Fanes in terms of the tax deduction. More importantly, that appraised amount, let's call it thirty million, I don't know what it is, is gonna form the ceiling for any potential tax rebates that the town will have to pay to the Fanes if it, the town imposes a property tax or commercial leasehold tax. You are being asked to approve something at this point in time when the most critical values, money, is unclear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Polk.
Hello. My name is Stephen Polk, attorney for the YMCA with Boyle, Petrich, Klein, Witting, Stallings, and Prescott. I'm gonna make two points for you. But speaking in favor of a YMCA facility at the Bob Edwards Park location. First is, the model of a municipal partnership, partnering with the YMCA, is a very common, very successful model. And towns and cities all over the United States have gone through a competitive selection process and determined that that is the best value for the community. It's cost-effective and provides the best programming and overall benefits to the community. And there are many examples all over the United States, and I'll provide a list of those to the town clerk. And among this, it's because the YMCA is more than a rec center. It provides all these other programming, and the childcare is beneficial. And the other thing is, we're the professionals. We know how to do it. We're backed by YUSA, so we have a whole national office full of experience showing us how to run a world-class facility. And this model actually follows the town's philosophy of small government, and that's why you have outsourced trash pickup, you have water, wastewater. But the town's philosophy is small government, fiscally conservative government, and selecting a YMCA is a continuation of that philosophy. And it will save the town money in the long run. And there are examples of town rec facilities that have ultimately been turned over to the YMCA because it's more cost-effective to let the private entity run the facility. Among other things is, the YMCA in Prescott has over 200 volunteers that believe in the mission of the Y, and they volunteer their time, and they help make it run and make it the incredible place it is. And my second point I want to make to you is just, bond financing is a good way to go to fund the facility. And for communities that are passionate about building a facility like this, you put it out to a bond vote, and you campaign for it, and if it doesn't pass the first time, you keep going. This just happened in Colorado, or actually, excuse me, in Washington, but you, it failed the first time, they brought it back on the next election, it passed, and they got their YMCA. And so I'd encourage you to select a YMCA at Bob Edwards Park, but believe in this for your community, make the right decision, and choose the Y. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bennett, welcome.
Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Wayne Bennett, chairman of the Prescott Valley Community Center Initiative representing the YMCA. Proposal D that you have before you is the same community center, same plan, including the indoor pool that this council approved in 2021. Proposal C is the same project on a different site but without childcare. This is the only meaningful difference. The $10 million cost difference reflects the childcare component. We believe the childcare piece can be built for significantly less, about half. But the point remains, childcare alone accounts for the difference. Childcare was removed from Proposal C because the town should not operate childcare programs, and we agree. But the YMCA is built to do exactly that. We are the largest childcare provider in the world, in the nation, and in the state of Arizona. We are also the only accredited, not credentialed, accredited provider capable of offering subsidized care to low-income and at-risk families. Non-accredited childcare providers cannot reach this population, so including childcare does not create competition, it simply fills a critical gap. As a leasing tenant of the town, the YMCA will meet this urgent need while delivering a full community recreation spectrum on a beautiful campus of more than eight acres on an ideal location. This becomes not just a building but a long-term community asset with real measurable impact. We all know that the highest cost of any project is not construction, it's operations. The YMCA will cover its own operating expenses, just as it has in Prescott for over fifty years. By using YMCA resources in design, construction, and operations, the town stands to save over $100 million over the life of the board, of the bond, sorry. No other option provides that level of fiscal benefit. So we urge you to view the childcare cost as what it truly is, an investment that unlocks a full, sustainable partnership with the YMCA. For a modest initial commitment, the town gains decades of savings, a proven provider addressing critical childcare shortages, and more than 100 employees returning to workforce each day, employees whose tax contributions help support the facility. The town of Prescott Valley invited the YMCA into partnership in 1995. Now thirty years later, Prescott Valley still does not have a YMCA. Imagine the thousands of families who would benefit it and the ones who still can. Today, you have the opportunity to finally bring a YMCA to Prescott Valley, an investment that is a fiscally responsible, socially impactful, and urgently needed project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity. First of all, I want to thank all of you at the meeting last time when you decided to have staff go get more information about the project and to encourage staff to bring back the YMCA. So thank you very much for doing that. Our relationship with this community goes back a long way, as Dr. Bennett has discussed. 1995 is what he talked about, and soon after the YMCA was built in 1998, Mr. Bennett was out here trying to do that very same thing again. After that, there's been at least five more attempts. Beyond the full spectrum of proven community programs that the Y is known for, from youth development, healthy living, senior wellness, and family services, what we bring to the table is something incredibly valuable, and you've heard it a couple of times, operational expertise. We have fifty-one years of operational experience right here in Prescott, and behind us stands 175 years of operational expertise with the YMCA of the USA. Prescott, or Prescott, I'm sorry. When you are a member of the Y, and I want to make this clear because there was some stuff in the paper this morning about being a member, when you're a member of the Prescott Y, you're not, or a member of the Prescott Valley Y, you're not just a member of Prescott. You have facility use of every YMCA in America, so you don't just get to use it here across the town. And I would like to say, like we said before, we are the professionals running community facilities. It's not a side project for us. It is our core mission, and we have perfected it over generations. I myself have over thirty-three years of working for the YMCA in maintaining and running programs. Fifteen of those years right here in Prescott as the CEO of the Prescott YMCA. And here's the bottom line. Every taxpayer, an elected official, should pay close attention to partnering with YMCA results in significant cost savings, as Dr. Bennett talked about. Not only construction, where our experience, partnerships, and even national resources help us avoid unnecessary costs, but in operational costs, which is your option number four. But then in perspective, we've saved the city of Prescott over $80 million in operating costs over the last thirty years. There's no expense line for community center YMCA in the city of Prescott. We're ready to continue that partnership. We're ready to bring our expertise and national resources and longstanding commitment to help bringing something remarkable that will serve the community, families, seniors, and generations, and for decades to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Clerk.
Okay, the next four names are John Mangierencina, Chris Russo, Patricia Betzold, and Tonya Fortner.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you for the time and your attention. John Mangierencina, I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. Briefly. I was involved in a motorcycle accident on 23 September at the Roberts Market. Fortunately, it was very minor. My hip is okay now. I was transported by an ambulance, priority ambulances, to the hospital. I was conscious, I wasn't bleeding, and was taken there, five miles, and dropped off. Fully recovered until I got the bill for the ambulance ride. Five miles. I didn't dirty the sheets, although they charged $100 for the sheet set. And I didn't have any lines. They wanted to run a line. I said, I was conscious, and said, no, I'm a hard stick. That's the end of that. To get in the ambulance was $1,890. $99 for the set of sheets. It was, let me see, some of the other. There was one other enumerated expense, the linens, the mileage, oh, and it was $1,985. I'm sorry, not $1,800. For a total of $2,181 for, I'll say ten minutes, because it was five miles, and let's say they were doing thirty miles an hour. When I called them and I said, what's the fee schedule? Nobody could tell me. Were they licensed? Nobody could tell me. I thought they were part of the fire department. Normally, other places I've lived, the fire department runs the ambulance service. It's not part of the fire department. So I just have some questions as to, one, is it a contractual obligation? And if so, was it a bid or are they the only operators allowed? Two, who sets the fees for these? I have to say, the staff here, the city hall staff was outstanding. They provided answers to all my questions and gave me the rundown of the Arizona Department of Health and Services statute rulebook, all 244 pages. I've downloaded. Fortunately, I haven't gone through it all, otherwise I wouldn't be standing here. That's all my concern. It was a shock. They didn't, I didn't think to ask how much it was going to cost. I mean, I'm from New York. The fees for the cabs are on the side of the door. Here, that is not the same. I understand that. But $2,000 for a 10 minute ride when I was in good shape. God knows what happens if I soiled more than the sheets. I just hope that somebody would take a look at this and come up with some answers. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, you know that the town doesn't have any role in the ambulance service. But if you'd like, I can help facilitate a meeting with you and some other individuals from the ambulance company, if you'd like that.
I would love that. I'm through your staff, have my phone number and address. I'll be able to respond at any, at any time.
And I'll make sure we get something set up for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Clerk?
Chris Russo?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, vice mayor and council members and staff. My name is Chris Russo and I live in Prescott Valley. I'm urging all of the people in Prescott Valley not to sign any referendums because organizations do not have to identify themselves, their group affiliations, or if they're even citizens of Prescott Valley. We urge people to avoid these petitions until you learn exactly who's passing them around for signatures. One thing PBCA is doing is saying that there are measured, there are for measured growth. Don't believe them. They were against Amazon expansion, against Lake Shore 650, and now are against all mining of any kind here in Prescott Valley or anywhere in Arizona, for that matter. When companies hear that PV is not welcoming to them, as was Amazon, they will look elsewhere for more friendlier towns willing to grow their workforce. Another thing PBCA is doing is insinuating that there is a third choice for the APNS gravel pit. This is at best disingenuous. There are only two possibilities. Stone Ridge, which will affect hundreds of residents in Stone Ridge and Victoria Gardens, not to mention traffic on Stone Ridge and 69, or Government Tank, which the Fains own, by the way, and have stated that they needed rock for their asphalt business to continue. They have it there. Government Tank will affect very few houses, as a matter of fact, is much further from those houses than Stone Ridge and Victoria Gardens. PBCA will say PV is already crowded and having mines or gravel pits or more houses or more big businesses will ruin PVC's, PV's homespun demeanor. I don't know how many people know this or not, but only 13% of Arizona is privately owned. The rest is government owned. So that kind of puts a crimp to the overcrowded argument. People want to move here and as long as they do, they will need jobs, houses and a welcoming environment. I moved here four years ago and because of that, I'm not going to stop others from, I'm not going to stop others from, because I've arrived. And I want to stop because I moved here. And let's not forget, some of the PBCA members don't even live in Prescott Valley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. If you're counting at home, we're halfway there, folks. Welcome, ma'am.
I'm Patricia Betzel, recently Chino Valley. This is concerning the development agreement that is predicated on the assumption that residents of PV actually support it, rather than putting this very important issue on the ballot for everyone to vote on. This will impact the entire town and also set a harmful precedent. Is PV now a mining town? And don't forget, we're talking about 50 years minimum with a mining lease license. Other issues that this development agreement does not include the parcels, neither by number or by image in this agreement. It only says it's a portion of the land near the Fane Park. The conditional use permit is not included in this packet. Now, the 40 acres is mentioned in here, but one of the things that isn't is the increase from 20,000 tons to 100,000 tons blasting event that was noted in the September 26, 2025 draft of this very same agreement, as well as removal of environmental protections. Now blasting sizes are not mentioned at all in this document. There's no limit mentioned at all. The operation mitigations are full of the word may. May is something we say in Mother May I. It is not a legal restriction on anything. Not blasting, not hours of operations and not hauling. And also that the town actually doesn't regulate a mine. The state does. The town doesn't have any power to do that. The agreement not to expand the 40 acre site into the 1,700 plus acres the Fains own adjacent to the site, behind Stone Ridge, behind Raven Ridge, behind Prescott Country Club for only 15 years. Maybe they're waiting for us to die, but the families and the children that live in those communities will still be here to see it. Again, only mentions a designated portion of the parcels. There are four parcels that aren't mentioned. Two of those are owned by the Fains west of the Stone Ridge Bridge. There's also two BLM parcels, which the Fains could easily lease and do mining in. They keep, they're also keeping their mineral and water rights from the designated parcels. We all know what happens when they want to claim those. So finally, what are we getting for protecting Fane Park from Fane mining? A forever mine, a forever tax rebates for any of their properties, a promise that it will only last 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tanya Fortner?
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Tanya Fortner, longtime resident, almost 50 years here in Yabupai County. Well known to be a numbers person. Started a business here, sold it, haven't had to work for money for 25 years. Have worked in all, many of the nonprofits in town because they all need numbers people. What I think about when I look at the proposals is how can a city possibly compete with a Y's numbers in running a facility over the years? You're never going to be able to fundraise like we do. I was treasurer for our Y for more than 10 years, so I know what kind of fundraising we've done and how much that pool is to take care of. Let alone all the different kinds of instructors that you need to run all these programs. You're never going to be able to hire people to do that. You won't get the volunteers like we get the volunteers. The other thing is they would all be city employees. And then, aren't you tied into pension plans for every single city employee? You're required by law to. And so you might say, well, we could hire some other company to run it. Another company is not going to run it profitable and put the money back or you're going to lose any kind of advantage you have. And daycares, if daycares were profitable, they'd be all over the place. It has to be a nonprofit to run them. And we all know the kind of daycare needs we need. And we have, the Y, I've been affiliated with them for over 20 years, has never had a problem attracting and hiring good people and keeping them a long time. They have a national Y pension plan. They have national health insurance. We've got all that covered. The other thing I like to point out to people is once you start a kid in a Y program at daycare and they grow up through all those programs, you've got a really good kid. And the amount of money that a family of four will spend going to the movies one time and buying popcorn and sodas, they can go to programs all month long in a Y. So anyway.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the next four names, we have Randy Bosberg, Walter Kozar, Chuck Gorman and Tim Fugit.
I will say, if you're not already down close to the front row, please start working your way there. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, council, Randy Bosberg, Prescott Valley resident. I wanted to follow up another thing that Mac was talking about. There's, there haven't been any appraisals done on either the Government Tank site or Fane Park parcels. Therefore, it is negligent for the town of PV to enter into any agreement where no critically important financial amounts are yet determined or included. Therefore, consideration of the agreement must be tabled until proper financial package is included and made publicly available. The taxpayers do not want the council to obligate us to unknown tax debt without proper financial due diligence and disclosure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Walt Kozar, resident of Granville, Prescott Valley. I'd like to address all three items on the agenda today, if I have time. There's been a lot of very nice comments about the proposed YMCA or recreation center. And there's also been some interesting comments on the proposed gravel pit and the framed property. Nobody's mentioned anything yet about the refurbishment or reimagination of the fairgrounds. And I want to bring up that one of the main items of this fairground area is the building formerly known as the Wheelhouse Center. Now, that was supposed to be a big community recreation center. So the question one might ask is, well, if we're going to support that, how can we also support this new YMCA center? And how do we resolve potential redundancies in some of the activities? That if you look through the documents, you can see, oh yeah, there's similar things that both of these proposed. So I recommend that the council come to a resolution for what we're going to do with the old wheelhouse facility so that people don't think we're putting a whole bunch of money into this project and at the same time trying to raise, you know, $30 million for, for a new YMCA. You know, one possibility is selling that building and using that money to put towards this new YMCA center. Who knows, you know, maybe somebody wants to put a warehouse out there. But of course, that would require a zoning change. And on the zoning change, I have to say, I do support the zoning change for the Fane gravel pit out in the Government Tank area. I'd like to support business and industry in town. I think that's important. And I also think it's important to distinguish between property that is designated for residential and a residential neighborhood. Bob Edwards Park is in a residential neighborhood. Santa Fe Park is in a residential neighborhood. Government Tank is not a residential neighborhood. I think the Fains have done a good job to develop a plan that's as low impact as possible for the area. And, you know, as a Prescott Valley resident, I don't see any real downsides to Prescott Valley to go ahead with this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. My name's Chuck Gorman. Many of you may remember me from the last council meeting where I talked about council homes and distances from Government Tank as opposed to the ones from Fane. I just wanted to address the council for 30 seconds or so here. I've met many of you. You're all intelligent people. You're all very well educated. You know the difference between right and wrong. And you know what's good for PV, its residents and the other people you elected to represent. You know that placing a new quarries next to Fane Park is probably not a good thing. And you'll be having a couple of opportunities over the next week or so to vote to place the quarries either at Fane Park or Government Tank. So I ask you to do what's right and not allow new quarries at Fane Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. My name's Tim Fugit. I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. Can you guys hear me? Yep, thank you. I want to speak and support a Government Tank. I guess I would like to ask a question, why the council is listening to be PBCA? As an example, many residents, many are not residents of Prescott Valley. I think we just heard it from one over here a few moments ago. And yet they seem to squawk the loudest. For me, the bigger problem is they operate on a fallacy called appeal to motion. In the absence of factual evidence, they prey on the emotional response of a potential petition signer. They talk about, as an example, their beautiful subdivision at Prescott Country Club being affected by noise and disease. Okay, despite the significant difference or distance that they are from Government Tank. But they also exhibit some hypocrisy here. The very land at Prescott Country Club was developed on, was owned by, was owned and developed by the Fains. And it was, including the golf course as well. Back then, it was called Rafter 11 Ranch. We all know the restaurant after that name. So my question is, why can't they trust the same stewardship that the Fains have exhibited with other endeavors? And I think they've been very responsible in that endeavor, those endeavors. And now I'm going to get just a little personal. I would like to address Councilman Ken Front, hi, Ken.
Hello.
And Councilwoman Janelle Keel. I know that both of you are a little bit on the fence with respect to Government Tank. And I understand that. But I would like to address the fact that for you and Janelle, I do feel like you have a conflict of interest that might be ideological. You were a founding member, as you know, and first treasurer of PBCA. They were only organized two and a half years ago. This is not something decades old. But you could demonstrate your non-bias by voting for the Government Tank or recuse yourself. For Ken, I think you've constructed a false equivalency between APNS and C-Mex and Vulcan in the area where you live. The latter two are very large multinational corporations. I'd just like to finish quickly. I think the difference between comparing APS and those companies is like comparing trade leads.
We're going to start wrapping it up, sir.
What sees candy? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Clerk?
The last four names, David Larnar, Jean Perryman, Tim Dandrea and Joe Colosimo.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the town council, town manager and associates. My name is Dave Larnar. I'm a citizen of Prescott Valley and a resident of Stone Ridge. I'd like to make a few points and observations regarding the Government Tank gravel pit. Many of these comments I have made before at the PNC committee hearing, but I think they're worth repeating. As you know, most of the PBCA group leading the charge against the Government Tank location are not members of the Prescott Valley. You've heard that many times, so I won't, I won't belabor that. I guess one of my concerns is why are they given any oxygen on this matter in the first place? Secondarily, the gravel pit is a binary choice, as you know. Fane Park will be the legal choice if Government Tank is not approved. There's no third option, although PBCA people will lie and say there is. The PBCA group of people funded by some entity that has no interest in the betterment of Prescott Valley. If anyone does their own due diligence, you can't help but conclude there's dark money involved. PBCA's opposition report was slanted towards the preferences of homes in Dewey. And there's about a 200 plus home versus 20 home estimate of what could happen to each of the different homes. So finally, each of you sitting on this desk this afternoon are representative of all Prescott Valley citizens. For some, you might need to set aside your past associations with the PBCA. It is your civic duty to vote for what is best for Prescott Valley citizens. They are your constituents and they They are your constituents, and they deserve the best representation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, councils, mayor, vice mayor, manager. I'm Gene Perriman. I'm the president of the HOA at Victorian Estates. I'm here to represent 178 homes. A few weeks back, all of you received two letters from me. One of them dated November the 4th, one of them dated November the 5th. The November the 5th letter has to pertain to what we're talking about, the mining. If they're allowed to mine west of Stoneridge Drive, that's .38ths of a mile from Victorian Estates, that's one issue. Everybody's griping about how close it is to this and that and whatever. Here's the thing to think about. There's a 14-inch sewer line that goes through there. Put it near 30 years ago, it's cast iron. Cast iron is very brittle, plus it's 30 years old, and we don't know how it was nested. What happens if it breaks? Is there going to be any thing set up to can tell this bill? It's just down the hill to Fane Park. They don't have parts at Home Depot to fix it. Think about it. Another item, up on the hill, makes a 90-degree turn, is a 6-inch high-pressure gas line. I worked in a mine. We worked next to a larger gas line. We had to walk on pins and needles when we were doing it. Some people, a couple miles down the road, where they had a 90 degrees, the elbow cracked. Guy running the dozer with a ripper didn't have a chance. It came through the rocks where it was cracked. This is stuff that can happen. I'm not just BSing you. This is, can happen. It's not just the houses close by and everything like that. It's what can happen if this goes into there. You've got two big issues. I won't even talk about my emergency exit out of Victorian Estates we can't use yet. Right, Mr. Gilbert? Okay. There's just too many things can go terribly wrong if that goes. That's what I'm trying to point out. Okay? Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, everyone. I'll order you a longer coos neck. Tim Dandrea, I am a resident of the Raven Ridge neighborhood, very close to our neighbor, our mayor here. Many of us in this room strongly feel that a new gravel quarry in an existing neighborhood next to thousands of residents is frankly a terrible idea. We want to urge the council to consider a third option, a new gravel pit that is out of town, out of town. Sure, there will be some additional transportation costs to get the material to the processing center. The Government Tank Plan already provisions for this. Site 3 would just be a little farther away than the Government Tank site, and it would be out of town, away from neighbors. That should be proposed as an alternative. I haven't heard a single thing about a Site 3. This town population is 50,000 going on 100,000, quite frankly. Once a new quarry goes in, next will be more ugly industrialization around it. We have no assurances that that won't happen, but that is assumed that will happen in the long term. Anyway, I made my point. We are in favor of a new mine, obviously one is needed, just not in town next to thousands of people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir.
Hi there, Joe Colosimo. I'm speaking as a resident of Stoneridge and citizen of Prescott Valley. The development agreement is not perfect, no contract ever is, but in the long run, the town of Prescott Valley comes out the winner with new land for a greater Fane Park for all of Prescott Valley to enjoy. The agenda for the Prescott Valley Citizens Alliance is crystal clear. They want no mining in the state of Arizona, a state that gets most of its resource from mining. It funds our schools, roads, and municipalities. If they cannot have, if they cannot get no mining, then they want no mining within 10 miles plus of homes, as you just heard, by the way. Let's follow that lack of logic. If it wasn't for those gravel pits, there would be no homes for those roads for those people to drive on. Those gravel pits build our homes and roads. If the gravel pit is 10-plus miles away, that means that massive trucks will be on those roads. In our case, Highway 69, 89, 89A, and Interstate 17, hauling tons of rock and dirt from Point A to Point B. Those trucks will tear apart our roads, and we will be seeing road construction signs everywhere. Because those trucks would be driving even further than normal, the cost of the materials they are hauling would go up tremendously, and the cost will be passed on to us, the taxpayers. In regards to our local situation, APNS has run a clean operation since 1983. They were recently inspected by state and federal regulatory agencies and passed with flying colors. There is no reason to fear them. But if the new location is not moved to Government Tank, that will mean massive trucks on Stoneridge Drive and Highway 69, plus it will mean that Fane Park will have a gravel operation on both sides of it. If the people of Prescott Valley allow political action committees like the P V C A and the Citizens for Responsible Development to have their way, they will destroy and bankrupt Prescott Valley. I am begging the citizens of Prescott Valley, do not sign any petition that may be coming your way soon from the P V C A or any other political group. Question everything they say to you. Ask for the facts. Lastly, these political groups are well-funded for being in such a small area. Where is their money coming from? Council, why are you listening to these people? And I hope that I was able to be heard from all of those who are vacationing in Florida for two-plus months. Thank you.
Clerk?
No one else, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, new business, item 3A, recreation facility, consideration and possible action. Mr. Barton?
Welcome, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We received feedback from you at the previous session with council at the regular meeting. And so, we came back with some further options for this facility. Sorry, can you hear me? That's a little better? Okay. So, just going back, at the previous meeting, we met with council, we got feedback, and so we're bringing those options back again before council. And we wanted to also do a survey, and we got some feedback from that survey. So, as I go through the options, I'll just give some more information on those. And then, we have Paul Benz with High Ground who's going to follow me and give more information on that survey. So, as you can see from the matrix right here, these are the four different options that we are presenting for your consideration this evening. So, the first one is renovating the existing pool. Now, I'll go into more details for each of these options in the following slides, but this is just an overview to kind of give you an understanding of what we're going to talk about. So, in that left-hand column, we asked a question, is a bond needed? And that would go before the voters. It would be a sales tax increase that would back a bond. For that first option, it would be a no. We wouldn't need that. It'd be about $5 to $8 million for an estimated cost. Just a disclaimer on that, these are estimated, so it could be higher, it could be lower. We'd really have to dive into more details for that to understand exactly what those costs are. We'd have to get an RFQ for that. The second option would be a pool renovation with an indoor/outdoor design, and that would also not require a bond. That'd have a mixed method of funding, so sales financing and one-time funding. That'd be somewhere around 6, 10 to 16 million. The bottom two options are recreation facilities. So, the first one would be a municipally-operated facility. That'd be somewhere around 35 to 38 million. And the last option would be a full recreation facility that would be operated by the YMCA. That'd be somewhere around 45 to 48 million. As you can see, the first three options are municipally-operated. So, the location recommendation would be at Mountain Valley Park, and this would be for those first three options that are municipally-operated. The reason for this location is because it's already integrated with other recreation opportunities, so playgrounds, ballfields, pavilions. There's a network of sidewalks and multi-use paths. This would invest in established neighborhoods, and there's infrastructure already available. So, there's parking, there's utilities. Of course, there's the sidewalk connectivity as well. Now, to set the foundation for each of these options, we do have a current pool. It is aging, so it's around 30 years old. And with aging infrastructure comes acceleration of costs. And so, that's what we're seeing. We're seeing costs accelerate, which means that we have to replace things more often, like the pool decking, or like the heater, or, you know, different elements like that. And the pool is only open for a portion of the year, so during those summer months, so it wouldn't be open during any other time. So, it's about four months that it's open during the year. Now, there are programming limitations just with how the pool is set up. You can have one program in the pool at a time. A number of other pools have two kinds of sections, so you can have one program running while you have another one or open swim area. How our pool is, we can have one program at a time. And then, with that, again, it was built 30 years ago, so some of the requirements are different nowadays when it comes to depth limitations. The IBC has standards, so like lifeguard stands, fencing, plastering, some of those other things may need some improvements, and we're looking at those very soon dawning on the pool facility. And then, again, we have some facility building space. Those are aging, and then we don't have any modern locker room or changing rooms. So, for that first option of renovating the existing pool, again, it costs somewhere around $5 to $8 million. We had our team go out to the pool with some architects and a construction design team very recently. They said they did a similar project. It was closer to $9 million, so I'm assuming it'd probably be on the higher end of the spectrum if we did go with this option. Of course, we'd probably want to have a higher contingency for this option because, you know, when you go into some aging infrastructure, you can always find something that you didn't expect to find, and so that may be the case here. So, this amount would pull from current savings or our reserves. And what this would do is it would just improve our existing amenities, so it wouldn't add any new functionality to the pool. So, it would still remain with those months of operation, so during the summer months. Now, that would keep operations the same, so we wouldn't add any operational capacity, so the funding would stay the same for this as well. And this would really renovate the pool. It'd add a little bit of capacity, some depths, and some of the infrastructure and maintenance needs that are needed for the pool at this time. So, option two is a pool renovation with an indoor/outdoor design. That would be somewhere around 10 to 16 million. Again, that is most likely going to be at the higher end of that. You can see some illustrations of what this may look like. So, when we talk about a cover or an indoor/outdoor design, it looks something like this, where you could have some bay doors or some openings to get some air in and out. Now, this would most likely require HVAC, dehumidification systems, some additional maintenance for that, and infrastructure for that. Now, the money for this would come from a mix of different sources, so most likely from reserves. We could finance some of that. It wouldn't go before voters, but that would come from town financing and then one-time funding, so that would be a construction sales tax. Now, with any of these options, you have to consider there's opportunity costs, so any of that funding could be used for other projects, like, you know, streets, sidewalks, trails, you know, other infrastructure projects. And so, there's always that cost that you have to consider both ways when you use an existing source like those. This would add a new amenity to the community, so it'd add a year-round access to a pool, which is what the community has voiced that they are interested in. We don't have an indoor pool here in Prescott Valley. There's different HOAs that have a pool. Stoneridge kind of has an in-and-out pool, but that's for the HOA. So, this would be the first indoor pool in the town. Now, something I really want to emphasize is that pools are cost-intensive. So, pools, you know, they don't have very much cost recovery. They don't generate very much revenue on their own. And so, this would add staffing and operational costs. Right now, we're about a little over $400,000 for the current pool, just with the short months of operation. This would tip it closer to $1 million, 1.2 million, and that would be something that the town would need to absorb at that point if there wasn't some sort of cost recovery element with that. So, that's something that council should consider. Now, for a recreation facility, there are really two options, and that's why you see two price values there. One is the municipal option, that's the 35 to 38, and then one is the YMCA-operated model, that's 45 to 48. And I'll go over the difference for that. Essentially, it's just childcare, but I'll go into more detail on that. So, for a full recreation facility, we'd have to have a dedicated funding source. We don't have the resources to be able to pay for this with our current reserves or resources. And so, that would be a sales tax, and that would require voter approval. Now, again, the big difference between just having a pool and a rec center is that there would be some revenue generation potential, and so that would come through memberships, through fees, through facility rentals, and those would help offset some of those operational And with a recreation facility, it would introduce a number of new amenities that we don't currently have. So, you're talking the fitness studios, you're talking weight and conditioning space, indoor track. We have a list of those amenities, and I'll show that on an upcoming slide here. And now, with this also, it would have a higher operational cost. So, obviously, you'll have more staffing, maintenance, and year-round operations, and so this would be the highest operating cost option. Part of the committee discussion was going over phasing and the potential for phasing, so I just wanted to cover some of the considerations that would go into phasing or just things you should think about when it comes to that. Phasing typically isn't a cost-saving measure. You don't do it to save costs. Typically, phasing is when you have funding for each phase, the first phase helps pay for the second phase, second phase the third phase. That's typically how it works. You do have mobilization, design adjustments, and construction staging, different elements that go into each phase. So, phasing typically adds money every time you get a construction crew out there or you have to go through a design element again. That's something to consider. And also inflationary measures. So, if you have inflation or something like that, that could change some of the costs as well. And that leaves future phases in question without a funding plan. So, if you have a funding plan, then you can plan for those future phases. If you don't, then it's difficult to do that. Now, as you can see from kind of those circles off to the left, if you delay revenue generating components until later, it's more difficult to generate that revenue to pay off the rest of the facility. And so, again, the pool, if you started off with a pool, it wouldn't have that revenue generation component to it that would help pay for the rest of the facility. So, that's just something to consider. If you started with the other elements and then the pool, you could do that, but that's really what the community wants. We had a previous option with that where the pool wasn't included in the and the community wasn't the biggest fan of that. So now, also the amenities, the smaller amenities. I use the example of the part-time child watch. They add a great return on investment because it's only about 1,000 square feet worth of space. But when you add that on, there's revenue generating potential, right? You think about families who want to go to a rec center. Dropping off your kids allows you to have a membership. You can spend your time to do that. So there's great potential for that, and there's a higher return on investment on some of those smaller amenities. Now, we've had this be a little bit unclear. We've had a number of questions from people how this works exactly. So I just wanted to make it very clear that the town would fund the, the facility. And that's what we're talking about, finding a dedicated funding source for a recreation facility. And so none of this can happen. We can't have a recreation facility unless we find the funding for it. The town would then build it, and the town would own it. The town would maintain it and do the capital improvements. Now, the operation of the building would either be the town or the YMCA. So that's really the difference between the two. Now, the YMCA could go and build their own facility without the town funding it. That is an option. But what we're considering today is the town funding it, building it, and then owning it, and the YMCA just operating it. So this is a list of the amenities. The, the recreation facility considered these over the summer. That list of seven in green there, those are the, the amenities that they recommended to the council. And ultimately, they did not include the all-day childcare. And so that would essentially leave the town as the, the sole operator, the only one that would operate it. Now, if you add on that childcare component, then that's what the difference is between the two facilities. The YMCA would operate those, all eight of those different amenities. Now, going into a YMCA-operated facility, the biggest difference is that all-day childcare component. So when you see those two price differentials, it is the all-day childcare that is that difference. And that's the only amenity difference between the two. Now, as has been mentioned, operations would be hands-off if you have a YMCA. And that's typically why you contract operations is if you don't have the capacity to operate something internally or if you want an expertise to do it. And so with that, there'd be specialized operations and programming. You'd also have, you'd have the YMCA model. And so with that, it's a little bit more stringent on fees, memberships, and programming. So whatever the YMCA model is for those, that's what it would be. We wouldn't have too much flexibility on choosing what those fees or programs would be. Now, this would have a different location. And you can see in that picture, it would be just south of Bob Edwards Park. And there are some considerations with this location as well. So we would have to construct that road that would connect Main Street to Viewpoint Drive. And then we'd have to do the utilities sidewalk, the parking. So there are some off-site improvements that would need to happen with this specific parcel or this piece of land. Just going into the childcare components, from the bipartisan policy center, they, that's what that picture of Arizona is over there. There, there is a gap in childcare. There is a need. And generally, there is a need in rural Arizona. In more urban areas, they have more resources for that. But what's interesting is we, we did a community survey. And in that community survey, there are, there were 50 different categories that residents could prioritize. And as you can see, the top 20 priorities for the whole community, childcare wasn't on that top 20 list. Now, we ran three different scenarios for that. So the second scenario was anyone with children at home. So anyone who had children under the age of 18 at home. And then it rose up, that's what you see on the picture there, is it rose up to the 17th priority when you selected age. So anyone under the age of 35, then it rose up to the eighth priority. So you can see that it, it's closer to those who it affects. But generally, you know, if that's not something that you think about or you, you have kids at home, it might not be a priority. So we kind of see that happening in the community. Now, childcare opportunities, if this is something that council wants to go down, a road that you guys want to go down, the first step would probably be doing a childcare needs assessment. So conducting a study to understand what some of those gaps in the market is, or what's happening in the market, to understand, you know, what providers there are, what demands there are, what barriers there are. So that would really be the first step to understanding what's happening here in the town or in the region. After that, if the council wanted to start diving into creating policy or programs to help that, you could do childcare incentives, support programs, land use incentives. You could do startup, you know, incentivized startups or expansions, regional partner collaboration, public-private partnerships, community programs. I think of this issue very similar to like affordable housing. It's a very complex issue. It's not just one thing that you can do to, to change the, the outlook of, of childcare. There's a lot of different things. You'd probably want to have a comprehensive program. So this is kind of the roadmap if you want to go in that direction. For a municipally-operated recreation center, it'd be closer to about 35 to 38 million. And as you can see, that's a picture, this is the closest municipal, municipally-operated recreation center to here. So this is in Cottonwood. And they have, I believe it's about 50,000 square feet. So that's just right over there. This was ultimately the committee recommendation just because of the amenities that were recommended. Now, the main difference between a municipally-run operation and a YMCA-run operation is accessibility. So under the YMCA model, they generally earn their profit through their fees. So they have higher membership fees. And that's generally how they get their profit or net revenue. Now, for a municipally-operated recreation center, the town council or the community would have much more flexibility over those fees or the operational structure. So you could have higher fees to do some more of that cost recovery, or you could make them lower to make it more accessible to the community. You could provide cost breaks. So if you decided, you know, we want a lower fee for veterans or something like that, you could make some of those decisions. Also, programming, so you'd have some decision-making over what programs happen there and what the, how extensive some of the operations are. And now, obviously, this would integrate with town recreation services and programming. So it'd be an extension of that. And then any revenues generated from the facility would go, be reinvested back into the facility. It wouldn't be reinvested somewhere else. And ultimately, with the town having the responsibility of doing maintenance and capital improvements, those, having that revenue could really help with, with some of those maintenance and capital improvements. Now, I wanted to pull an example of some of the fees. That way, you could kind of see some of those differences between the, the two different models there. So as you can see, most municipalities have something around 30 to $35 for like a monthly adult. The YMCA is higher, so it's about 50 before the Prescott and the Flagstaff YMCA. And that's just where the difference in the model is. So under a municipal option, you'd, you'd have the flexibility to increase, to decrease, or to change some of those. But you, you have to pay for operations somehow. And that's essentially the difference between the models. Now, what you see from the amenities there is a majority of municipalities don't do the all-day childcare. And, and the YMCA has been forthright that, that is part of their model to provide some of that revenue generation, but also to provide some continuity throughout their operations from, you know, a younger age up until they're older. Now, it's worth noting that those all-day childcare costs are not part of the fees. So that would be a separate fee and cost structure. So those, those are some of the main differences or considerations between these different projects. As you can see, steps moving forward is a, a decision on what direction you want to move in. So between option one, two, three, or four. And then from that, what we would do is prepare an RFQ. So we'd need to, to get an architect or a construction team on, on board to help design and do some of the pre-construction work. And what that would do is it'd give us a footprint and help shore up some costs. Then those, those bottom two options, the option three and option four, because they require a, a bond or they go out to the voters, we'd do a call to election. That would just be paired with our other call to election. We already have an item for November, so it would just be paired with that. And then the election would be on November 3rd of 2026. With that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Paul Bence.
Mr. Barton, hang on one second. Vice Mayor?
Okay.
Skylar, I just want to reiterate, because we have something on the November 26 ballot, there is no additional cost to the town of Prescott Valley, correct?
Correct.
So this was not, if we put the sales tax increase, it does not cost the taxpayers any additional monies.
Correct. All right, so I'll go ahead and bring up Paul Bence, and he will go ahead and talk about the survey that we've just recently conducted.
Good morning, sir. Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Paul Bence. I'm the senior vice president of research and strategy at High Ground Public Affairs. We conduct a wide variety of statewide, regional, and local polling. All of our survey research is done by live individuals at scientific survey. No AI is used, no robots, no push-button, no text, no websites, everything else. This is human beings talking to humans. It is still the gold standard of, of polling. We conducted the survey November 10th through the 13th of this year. It's a sample of 350 people, which means 350 individuals took the entire survey from beginning to end and answered every question. And we compiled that data. One of the things that we talked about is looking at what a November 2026 voter looks like. So one thing to bear in mind is that only about 70% of the adult population is actually registered to vote. That means three out of every 10 adults who tell you that they're registered to vote are actually lying to you. So we, so we start with that. So 70% of the adult population is registered to vote. But when you talk about, there's a significant difference in the type of election that takes place. So we just got done with the presidential election. Presidential election is the highest type of voter turnout that we had in 2024, okay? That is about 75 or so percent voter turnout. That means 75% of that 70% vote in that election. So a little over half the adult population, okay? When we talk about a midterm, the midterm election is significantly lower. It's somewhere in the 60 to 65% range. When the president's not at the top of the ticket, when it's the gubernatorial cycle, voter turnout is lower. So we make sure we account for that, and we're accurate with everything that we do. I'm not up here to give you what you want to hear. I'm here to give you what you, what the facts are and what the accurate unbiased information is. So when we go through this, everything that we do when we conduct the survey is to ensure that we don't add bias, we don't lead people down a road, we don't negotiate with voters. Everything we do is we're talking to voters, we're asking them questions, we're gauging their opinion, okay? The margin of error on this survey is plus or minus 5.2. That means if we ask this survey 100 times, 95 out of 100, every question would be within five points higher or lower of these issues. So just bear that in mind in the margin of error. We balance this to based on turnout. So I, I look at the audience, and I think it's pretty reflective. See a lot of gray hair in this audience? Over 50% of the electorate in your area, and I'm sure you're aware of this, over 50% of the folks that would participate in this election are over the age of 65, okay? We balance it based on party, too. It's a significantly conservative electorate. We balance using the zip codes as well to make sure that we have a fair and balanced reflection of partisan age, region, to make sure that you're getting reliable results. So we do that to ensure, again, that we're giving you the best data possible. First thing that we ask is a couple of warm-up questions. We ask right direction, wrong direction. 55% of respondents think that the town is headed in the right direction, compared to over, only about 31% that think it's wrong. You have a little bit more optimism in the 50 to 64-year-old range, which is actually quite surprising because in 2024, they were the most pessimistic audience in any of the surveys that I've done. So that we actually have a pretty positive. If I were to ask the direction of the country right now among your electorate, it'd be at about the 30% range. If I asked the direction of the state, it'd be about the 40 to 42% range. Asking the direction of the town, you're at 55%. That's pretty much in line with what we see with municipalities. Local government is incredibly popular. People like their local government, they're very happy with the direction of the town. So when you look at voters, people are generally pretty happy with what's going on in the community. We also asked, in general, how would you rate the overall quality of life? And over 70% of respondents gave us an excellent or very good response, which is incredibly high. I will tell you, I do a lot of this right direction, wrong direction. You're about where we see most municipalities in that 55%. Some, some communities are as high as 60, but that's about standard. 3.8% basically for a mean score is incredibly high. This is the first example of the Likert scale, sort of scale of one to five. In this case, if you think of very poor as a one, and excellent as a five, this is sort of like your Yelp review, your, your star rating, your score, okay? So when we look at the mean scales, that's what we're looking at. And it's a very helpful tool for survey researchers to give you a reliable number. We're going to use that quite a bit over the course of the survey because it gives you an apples-to-apples comparison. So right now, when you look at your mean score, very much 70% in that excellent and very good range. It's a very positive score. Again, in this case, 80% of your 65 and older gave you a excellent or very good, and then another 76% of your 50 to 64. So the bulk of your electorate really very much likes the quality of life in the community. That does speak to some of these recreation options. There may not be as necessarily as much of, while you hear it from the community side of things, people are generally pretty happy with this. The other thing I would point out, because Skylar mentioned the community survey, there is a little bit of a difference between a community survey and this survey. This is the voter's survey, right? It's a subset of a subset of a subset. Only about 27% of these respondents have kids at home. Okay, so think about the other 70-plus percent don't have kids under the age of 18. So they may not think of some of these items the same way because they don't necessarily deal with them on a day-to-day basis. From there, we asked municipal services, and these were all randomized, rotated. Again, on the scale of one to five, excellent versus very good. Number one issue that we measured here was the library at 4.25 with almost 75%, giving it an excellent or very good. You can see your police, as well as your parks and recreation, do incredibly well. Street maintenance is a little bit lower, but still, I will say, I've compared this to very much, much community, a lot of different communities. This is actually a pretty good street score. Most street, most communities, particularly growing ones, have a street score below three. People are always concerned about the streets, no matter where you go. So it's not surprising that the streets is lower. The building and planning being a little bit lower, you might know more about that than I. That, that's a little bit of an outlier right now. That's the only one that falls below three. So some folks got police first, other folks got library first, and then we randomized and rotated them to ensure that it wasn't just because one was asked first that they get the best particular answer out of it. From there, we did a pre-test. And this is meant to replicate ballot language. We worked with the legal team and others to ensure that we got something that looked similar, at least in the, in the construction of what an actual electoral question would look like. Because if you ask people, "Do you want the rec center?", a large number of people would say yes. When you ask people, "Would you like to pay taxes for rec center?", fewer folks say yes. When you ask people, "Shall the town of Prescott Valley be authorized to increase the town's sales tax by one and a half percent, excluding grocery sales for a period up to 25 years, adding sooner to the project cost?", fewer folks say yes. The reason you ask that, though, is the only thing you can guarantee if you go to the ballot that voters will see over the course of the election is the ballot language. So we do that to ensure that we're getting the most reliable data possible based on if somebody doesn't get communications, if they don't see anything else, if they show up to vote, how is their initial reaction to it? Because you can't guarantee you're going to be able to pull all 50,000 of your residents aside and give them the pep talk about what this is really about. You have to, you know, basically only put in front of them what you know they're going to see. So we did that to start. Spoiler alert, we do this at the end, too. So we ask them at the beginning, we give them some additional information, and then we do it at the end to kind of see how folks change. What you see is here, we start with about 48% yes and 48% no. And this is incredibly, incredibly rare. I don't usually see an even split on these items when we measure this. I will also note, having a don't-know of only 3.7% is incredibly low. Generally, the don't-know rate that we see in these types of surveys in other municipalities is somewhere in the 12 to 15% range. So you've got some pretty... So you've got some pretty solidified, stratified groups that have ideas about things. And you'll notice a couple of things. First, the definitely yes is about 27% compared to the definitely no, that's at about 33%. We like to see the definitely yes equal or at least higher than the definitely no, because those are the two passionate groups, right? The probably yes, the probably no, they might be movable, but the definitelys are traditionally not quite as movable. The other thing we look here is that you do have a majority of the voters 49 and under voting yes, but you do have a slight majority of the 50 and older basically voting no. So if you were to perceive of something, education among the 50 and older audience would be essential, because right now, their inclination, and they are a vast majority of your electorate, at the outset, based on just sort of the tax proposal itself, they tend to lean more towards no than yes. We like to see issues like this start in that 50-plus percent range, obviously, because of that margin of error, right? Right now, we're looking at an issue that could be as high as 53% yes, but we could also be looking at an issue that's as low as 43% yes with that margin of error. So we like to see issues in the 50% range to give you that closer level of viability. This is pretty much even as we go into, as we measure the outset. From there, we measured the projects themselves that Skylar had described to you, giving people a little bit of an idea of the various amenities that have been offered. And this is not necessarily to decide what amenities should be in or out, but rather to give you an idea of what things stand out to the voters, or what items might you want to pay attention to. That's kind of the way we look at this. Because I'll give you an example. When we do this work for education, what we find a lot is, education used to list all-day K as their number-one item, because it started alphabetically with A. Well, all-day K is not always the most popular item for an education one. Or we'll see municipalities, they'll put together a bond program, they'll list it with their largest budget item, whatever was the biggest ticket item, they list that first, and they go down sort of that way. Often, that big-ticket item isn't always their best and most popular item. So this can even just give you an idea, you may do all of the amenities, but which amenities should you talk about first? The number one is the indoor pool. I think it reflected from the community survey as well. It is the number-one item, is the best-regarded item, is the most important among the electorate. Number two is the place to drop off children while using the facility with a two-hour limit. That was the next one. It is a pretty large falloff. The number-one priority is the indoor pool, by far and away. Sort of the second priority there is that the drop-off children while using the facility. And then we had a tie for third place, the gymnasium for basketball and volleyball sports was sort of the next one there at 3.33. And then on the next slide, we had another one, the all-day daycare, including classrooms and a dedicated playplace, fell at that same sort of level. So the childcare two-hour drop-off was sort of a little bit higher than the all-day childcare, but we did include that as well. The other items here, the group exercises, classes, multipurpose rooms, they all were in that three level. We like to see some of these amenities closer to 3.5 to show that effectiveness. The pool does that. A couple of the other ones get close. But we do all of that to do this. We put them all together on a ranking, so you can really see what sort of rises to the top versus what the other items are. And so this gives you a pretty good gauge. What I find here is pretty much, everything is above three. The indoor track is pretty close. There's nothing here that really stands out as something that is a drawback. And I do see that from time to time. We'll see different projects, worked for a community that had golf course renovations that were very much unpopular, for example. So when we do these types of programs, sometimes things do come out that you say, oh, boy, that would be a sticking point or something to pay attention to. In this case, there's nothing sort of within the items that we see that really stands out, with the exception that the indoor pool, by far and away, is the most popular item that we tested. From there, what we do is a thing called reason testing. If I asked 350 people, "What's motivating you to vote yes?", or "What's motivating you to vote no?", I'd get 300 different responses. And nobody has time to read through all of those and look through those and get an idea. So what we do instead is we measure some sentimentality, and the idea behind it is, we give half the folks the negative reasons first, and half the folks the positive reasons first, and then we switch them. And then we ask them the other ones. The whole idea is everybody gets every question. Again, they get the positive reasons, the negative reasons. But we're trying to understand, what do they agree with? What do they think? What's motivating them? What stands out for them? So to give us an idea of sort of where people stand on these items. So when we do that, we do ask tough questions. We ask about taxation, we asked about fixed income, but we also do some of the things, what's motivating people when it comes to items like investing in our future? And what we find is this notion that it's an investment in our future, creating a lasting community space where families, seniors, and young people can come together for generations to come. 44% strongly agreed with that notion. It's a 3.67. It was one of the highest motivations for people to support. Economic development was a little bit lower at 3.28, the idea that it's going to be able to bring people in, you know, the idea that would drive economic development, still worked. It's still a convincing argument, just less so than it has been in the past. If I were to measure this a decade, when I first got into polling two decades ago, economic development was the number-one thing. No matter what it was, if it was going to create jobs, attract economic development, if it's going to make it a more attractive place for businesses to locate, it'd be the number-one thing. We've seen with economic success, that has gone down a little bit, and we've seen that replaced with a little bit more of these quality-of-life, community development issues. People care a little bit more about those. That doesn't mean that economic development's not important, just a little less important than it has been in the past. The number-one, though, is this idea of health and wellness for all ages. I will tell you that specifically, the family-friendly spaces would support wellness and social interaction. I think that was a big driving force. This idea that your community is safe and family-friendly is something that drives a lot of your electorate, and it's a firmly-held belief within the community. That was the one that did the best among 65 and older. 43% strongly agreed with that or gave it a five. It's a 3.73. The idea that it's a fiscally-conservative approach, that this idea, it limits borrowing money, and that visitors and nonresidents can help pay for the facility, as a sort of a fiscally-responsible approach, it does okay. That would be one that would take some repetition. Voters are unsure about that one. That one had a higher unknown, that the idea that it would be a fiscally-responsible way. If that's one of the messages here, it's going to need a little bit more communication to the audience. And then finally, you know, this idea that it's a dedicated funding and sunset, this is probably a little bit of a better explanation of what potentially could be done compared to just a fiscally-conservative approach to it, or fiscally-responsible approach, but only 29% strongly agreed with that. So ultimately, by far and away, the two biggest ideas are really the motivating factors for folks on why they would be as supportive of this item, is that health and wellness for all ages, which includes the family-friendly nature of it, and the investing in our future. Those are really sort of the two driving forces. And those are very good, positive motivational numbers. On the other hand, I will say that there are some drawbacks. We are, you know, measured this in November. Nobody predicted a very long government shutdown. I don't think people predicted inflation to be, and some of the cost concerns that we're seeing, gas prices are up a little bit, there's some high-cost concerns among the electorate right now. Now, polling is a snapshot in time. If inflation goes down by spring of next year or into next November, certainly could improve some of these numbers, as people are concerned about them at the moment. However, if the economy goes down, or if something were to happen and there was a large economic slowdown, it certainly could have a deleterious effect as well. So it can kind of go both ways. At this moment, what we are seeing is, in my statewide, regional, and local polling, is that other issues that have been big in the past have sort of fallen down a little bit well. Cost concerns, economic concerns, inflationary concerns have come up. I'm sure you feel that with your constituents and when you're talking to them as well. It's a pretty large driving force we're seeing in the world of public opinion right now. As you see this, costs and timing with inflation and interest rates high, now may not be the time to commit to a large project, construction and maintenance costs will grow. 37% strongly agree with that. It's a 3.63. People are less concerned about the regressivity of a sales tax, the idea that a sales tax hurts the most vulnerable, less concerned about that, more concerned about growing costs. People, most importantly, as you saw, 65 and older was 50% of the electorate, the largest issue is the idea of being on a fixed income, that we're not able to afford higher taxes, that they may not use, and those who would use the facility may not be able to afford the membership fee. Just sort of a general, personal income cost concern, I live on a fixed income, is a driving force, a motivating force. So communicating with that audience, making sure to be able to address that or mitigate that, certainly would be an important thing to address over the course of any sort of effort if you were to proceed, because that is a large effort here. There's less concern that not all residents may use it, the overall impact may be limited. That's less of a concern. Still something that some voters find convincing, you know, the more pessimistic portion of the electorate, but it's not as big of a force when you compare it to sort of inflationary concerns, fixed income concerns. The idea that we just simply do not need an aquatic and recreation center, and we should not spend taxpayer money to build one, this isn't an essential item, there's not a lot of agreement with that either, though. So the idea, what is interesting here, you're finding this nexus, and people do think it's an essential thing. People want it. You see, especially the aquatic center part of it, it's a priority for the electorate, it's a priority for the community in the community survey as well. It really comes down to sort of the costs associated with it. But that's something that you do see from time to time. People want something, but don't necessarily have the, you know, pretty significant concerns about how they're going to pay for it. So again, income and costs and timing, we put them all together into one. And again, when I talked about the Likert scale and why the mean score is important, this is why. So when you look at the reasons for and the reasons against for motivating folks, you can see that fixed income is by far, is the largest concern. It is very close to the health and wellness for all ages, and investing in our future, and then sort of costs and timing. Ideally, you'd like to see the positive messages of the reasons that motivate people for to be significantly higher or more motivating than the ones that are against. But this is why we're really looking at a proposition where it's split pretty evenly. So when we ask at the end, okay, you've heard reasons for, you've heard about the amenities, you've heard about all of these items, I would like to ask you again, knowing just what you know right now, would you vote yes or no? You end up with 49.7% yes compared to 47.4% no. So on the bright side, I'll say this, most times over the course of a survey, we see, in my experience, issues go down. The pre-test is generally higher than the post-test. In very few experiences, does it go up a little bit? In this case, it went up, you know, basically a little bit, but we're really still at an electorate, only 2.8% said they don't know. It is split right down the middle. The definitely no still a little bit higher than the definitely yes, the probably yes still a little bit higher than the probably no. 50 to 64 splits evenly basically to 49.4 to 49.4. You still see a majority of 65 and older opposed. So there's still work to be done on any sort of communication, because that's the breakup and the build of your electorate. It's sort of right there in the middle. And then, as I mentioned, the net test, we see a little bit of falloff in the 65 and older. Everybody else gains a little bit. In fact, the biggest gain we see sort of is in that 40 to 49% range, that 30 to 39% range. The folks that are going to use it, the folks that were likely to have kids at home, those were the people that, once they heard, oh, it's got childcare, it's got this thing, they become more motivated to say yes to it. But that's not necessarily the point that motivates sort of that 65 and older to vote for it as well. Other than that, we asked a follow-up question at the end here. Okay, so you've heard about these proposals. If other items were included in the proposal, or in a bond item, or in a sales tax item in November, if these items were included, would you be more or less likely to support a proposal? Sort of, again, like I said, we don't negotiate with voters, but we do like to know, other things on your mind or things that you think about that might motivate you. And so the two that we really see here, that are sort of the top motivating, would be potentially, if there was open space involved in some sort of proposal, that would have a chance where you see a third of voters much more likely, or give it a five, that they would much more likely to support a proposal. And then you see street and road improvements, 33%, again, a third, which give it a five or much more likely. In this case, I sort of, those ones, those would be the two that you might want to think about, open space and/or street and road improvements, that would do a better job. Park upgrades don't really move the needle, and then sort of the multi-use path and the street, I'm sorry, the multi-use path and the public safety enhancements perhaps a little bit lower. But the two, open space as well as street and road improvements, do help a little bit, if they were potentially considered as well. So as I said, as I close out here, the only other thing was, when we did the survey, we don't set a quota for kids at home. We ask them, do you have kids under the age of 18 at home? Only about 23% said yes. So with that, I'm happy to bring Skylar back up and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, sir. I'll start online. Do we have Councilman Brian and Lopez listening with any questions?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me, sir?
Thank you. I just want to say, especially, well, to both you gentlemen, that it's been an excellent presentation. I think it's been well-balanced and well-thought-through, and I'm glad that we waited a little bit longer to get this. I think it's very valuable and very, you know, telling for what the people are thinking. So I just want to share my appreciation, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lopez?
Yes, I want to reiterate, yes, thank you so very much for that. It is actually a very comprehensive study that you guys did. I do still have a few concerns. On the expense of the pool, if we run it, what is the annual cost? And are the taxpayers willing to pay for that annual cost?
So which option were you talking about? Just doing the pool, or can you kind of expound on?
Yeah, just doing this one, just doing the pool, the indoor and the outdoor pool model. If you guys did that, like, what would that annual cost, cost the city or cost the town?
So right now, it's right around $400,000. It's a little bit more than $400,000 to operate, and that's just for the few months that we have it open. If it was year-round, so if it had that cover over it, it'd be closer to $1,000,000, 1.2 million, most likely to operate it.
And was that in the survey, when we surveyed the taxpayers, about what that actual hard cost would be to maintain it?
Yeah, so there was a component in the actual language.
And thank you so much for getting the information on the daycare. I do appreciate that, since I'm the one that really kind of pushed for that. But thank you, guys, for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Keel?
I just wanted to say that I think it's important that the community have a pool. They've had a pool for many, many years, and our children and our students at Bradshaw Mountain. And, you know, a lot of our adults love using the pool. So I think it's very important to go ahead and move forward with at least doing A or B. Many people have said that they would like an indoor/outdoor pool, and yeah, it's a few million more, but it's, I think, worth it to our citizens that they would like that option. And I wouldn't want to wait until a vote. I think our pool is, it's old. Heck, it didn't even have heat for a year. So I think it's important that we move forward with fixing the pool, regardless of what, you know, whether we do a YMCA or a town facility, our community. And yes, it costs $400,000 to staff, but we're not charging fees anymore. We waived all the fees for people to use the pool, so that would help offset. And I also agree, we should be looking into childcare and what is actually a need in our community, if it's infant, toddler, or if we're looking for after-school programs. You know, I know that I've lived in other areas where the YMCA operated out of an elementary school, and they provided after-school care. So, you know, there's a lot of options.
You guys did a great job. Great job on the survey. It's kind of refreshing to see a survey that's actually valid. It wasn't like done on Nextdoor or something, where we actually got good information from a survey. It is also interesting that it's 50/50, right? It's a coin flip on whether or not the residents want to support a sales tax increase to fund a large project. As the vice mayor mentioned earlier, it doesn't cost anything to throw it out there, put it to the voters, and while in the same time, like Councilwoman Keel said, we still plan for a worst-case scenario if something doesn't happen, right? If it doesn't pass, where you haven't been just sitting on our hands for eight months, we actually then pivot, go to Plan B, and see what that looks like. So I think that's kind of what it comes down to. By the end of the day, the most important survey will be on Election Day. important survey will be on Election Day. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
Well, Mr. Mayor, with that, I, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and put the sales tax increase on the November third, twenty-twenty-six ballot with as broad language as possible, not endorsing either or, and then concurrently directing staff to proceed with Option B.
Any comments on that? I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
Clark, we have a motion and a second. Please call a vote.
Councilmember Froy, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez? How do you wish to vote? Councilmember Lopez, how do you wish to vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, Item 3B, Playground Reimagined Project. Who's leading this one? Mr. Newsom.
Welcome, sir.
Hey, how's it going, Mayor? Vice Mayor, Council?
This is a look that I don't normally see, sir. Just so we know.
There you go. Over the past several months, multiple departments have been working together to reimagine this site. Today, you're going to hear from several departments. If you recall, back in September twenty-twenty-five, the town resumed the responsibility of ownership and maintenance of this property. We did a five-year lease agreement with the dance studio.
Josh, why don't you hold on just a couple minutes while the room exits?
No problem. We did a five-year lease agreement with the dance studio. Along with that, we brought the electrical in that area up to speed. The goal is to retain the BMX track and the RC track, the, bring those amenities to the residents, as well as relocating the Parks Operations Center over to the south end of this property. So we look forward to hearing your guys' questions and everything. We have several people that will be talking from other departments on this. And I'll hand it over to Skylar.
Thanks, Josh. Welcome, sir.
So as you see highlighted there in Section Two, just south of the actual building, this would be, or it has previously operated as a BMX track. The town is looking to provide a license agreement for that to continue operating as a BMX track. They are currently not operating right now, so they don't operate December through February, but they do otherwise. They open Thursday nights and Sunday afternoons. And then, just at the very top of that section, we are also looking to potentially add a licensee operator option for the RC track as well. That's Section Three. This is a closer up of that. Section Three, we'd like to move the Parks Maintenance Division out here. Now, at the current Long Mesa facility, we have about fifty employees that are currently there. It's very, it's very tight in terms of parking and space for equipment or materials. And so essentially, this would give us greater space for potential expansion. So you see there's the one, two down there. Those are two existing buildings that could house our Parks Maintenance staff. And then there's some items for potential expansion for them. And those other areas would be for material storage. So playground storage, material bins. Right now, we have to go back to the supplier if we have playground surfacing, or topsoil, or DA, any of those materials, we have to keep going back. So having one place that those could be clearly separated, that they could go and pull from, would be a great benefit to our Parks Maintenance staff. We did have a, a community meeting. It was very well-attended. We had about eighty participants in that meeting, and we did a, a survey during that time. So we had close to fifty people who took that survey. And we asked a question, which of the following would you and your family be most likely to use and support within the, the complex? And the top two were fitness, sports, or recreation programs and youth programs. The rest of the options were very similar in terms of response there. We also asked a similar question to the Bradshaw Mountain High School students. We had over three hundred students who responded to this survey. The top responses were fitness, weightlifting, volleyball, basketball. And then again, those other options were very, very similar underneath that. With that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Jamie.
As you can see, what's permitted in a PL zone, this is where I started to look at what could I recruit to this area. As you can see, currently, if we use the PL zone, we can use a community archery park, concession stand shade structures, onsite supply support and location, open shoot, short and long range tournaments, bow hunting, recreation for all ages. Other opportunities, as you can see, is an outdoor golf range, which I've been in discussions with as well. Not the one you're thinking, but there are a couple other alternatives that are, might be interested in this. Now, the only thing that would need rezoning is the convenience store. If we, right there on number four, if we put a convenience store, gas station, that would need to be rezoned. And that's the only part that would need to be rezoned. So as I go on recruiting for these, for this area, we're looking at sports, recreation, in general, activities for the kids to do, high schoolers, so that they have something to do with that. As you saw on the previous slides, that's kind of what they're looking to do. They're looking to find some new things to do. And I think it'd be greatly beneficial to the town. Okay, next step. So it's cleaning up the facility, the wheelhouse, and getting it ready to go. And then it's going in an RFP plan, which is in process right now, and will be presented to you probably mid to late January for approval. Any questions?
Councilman Froy or Councilwoman Lopez, any questions?
No, sir.
No.
Councilwoman Schumacher?
So I saw that you had the golf netting and all that against the highway there that runs right next to it.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be a little bit more feasible or logical to move that to the other side? Because I know that they're not supposed to be able to hit a golf ball over into traffic, but it just seems like the, the road's right there.
The reason why I chose that is because I saw this exact thing as I was driving down the highway in Wisconsin when I was up there to see my son. Yes, it could be moved anywhere. It's, it's just a matter of making them interested in what we have and what we have planned for the area. So, yes.
I think that's an excellent idea. It's just that golf balls and cars.
They don't mix. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
And there is a component to that that is arcade and restaurant-esque too as well.
Councilwoman Keel?
So, yeah, I look at that, looks like Topgolf. So I take it that's not who you're talking to, but you're talking to someone?
No, that's correct.
Okay. I can see something like that working in the area. The, the youth sports thing, that, you know, we've been trying that for four years and it hasn't, you know, the kids say they can't get there. It's just too, you know, a lot of them don't drive. And so they're not able to get there. And I think it was Walt that was saying, we don't need, you know, a rec center plus a, you know, they overlap. So, so doing something like a Topgolf or, you know, the archery, doing some things like that. Or even, I don't know if you're talking to somebody specific about Glassford Hill and the ropes course, but maybe something like that could go there instead. And it could be more of a tourist area because it's got the freeway access. So.
I'm not in direct contact with anyone about ropes courses, but I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Yeah, but that, that could be a cool, a cool thing, and the, the highway supports it.
Thank you.
Appreciate staff's, you know, involvement in this. And we're kind of very early on in the stage, right? We, we don't know what we don't know.
That's correct.
It really comes down to what, what people are interested in, what, what comes to us, what, what RFPs we see. And then we can kind of dial it in on what works, what doesn't work.
Exactly. And we can also explore the opportunity of a sports management, and that doesn't include just sports, company to run it, where it's actually professionally run. And they choose the activities based on the population and based on the need of students and what, what that is. So we can look at that opportunity as well, which I have been in discussions with.
Yeah, so I think it's a, a great start. And eventually, when we start getting more specific, we can kind of go from there.
Exactly.
Heck, you even had a zoo up there on the list, right?
I'm not quite sure who to talk to about that.
Anything else for staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just real quick. So the cleanup of the existing facility is underway. So there are things being removed at this time. That's going to go through January, and we're going to be working with the nonprofit operator to make sure all of their items are, you know, safely removed and everything's cleaned up. That'll enable us to start with really a clean slate. And then, you know, really, this RFP process is just, it's an opportunity to see who may be interested. So you're not making any decision on this, obviously, tonight. It's just going to be putting something out, really kind of in this vein of, of thinking of, you know, what could we have from a recreational standpoint? I can tell you, the goal, from certainly my perspective to all of you, would be, we want some, someone, some entity that's going to cover the costs. So we do not want something that is going to cost the town more money. There are elements that were highlighted in this map that we will be taking over because we need the space. But our goal is to find an operator, a partner, that can do something good for the community at no cost to the town.
And in addition to that, Mr. Davidson, I think it's important to know that those companies that I am talking to know that there's an RFP coming out. And I can't do anything with them until the RFP comes out. So they have a complete understanding of what the, what it's going to be. They know it's coming, and they're more than excited to see it.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
I just had one other concern. When Gilbert was talking about, you know, we're talking, this report said that we're going to bring, be bringing it into compliance with state and town code. And maybe some of that, you know, maybe we don't have to spend too much money on that. Just make sure it's safe right now for the dance studio, but don't redo everything, because maybe some company is going to come in and want to knock it down.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Keel, all members of the council, yes, we, there were things that we had to go in and, and address, and we've done that. And we'll continue to make sure the appropriate departments with building official is, is, you know, paying attention to what's going on out there. So we want to make sure that whoever's out there, current leases or other people visiting the facility, it's a safe place. So we're, we have done that, for sure.
Thank you, staff. Moving on, Item 3C, Development Agreement, Fane Family and APNS Proposed Government Tank Rock Harvesting Site. Mr. Davidson, are you taking this?
Mr. Mayor and council, I think I'll start it.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll go from there. This is an opportunity to share with you a draft development agreement that you can look at and, and give us some comments about. There's been a lot of discussion about this development agreement. I'd like to emphasize what it's not. A development agreement is not a quid pro quo. It is not being proposed to affect your ability as a legislative body to decide about the General Plan Amendment or the Zoning Map Amendment. Those are separate actions that will be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then by you after public hearings. And you'll make your decision based on what you hear at those hearings and what you decide as a legislative body. What the development agreement is intended to do is to help the town figure out what will happen in those four parcels that are west of Fane Park. If you vote yes, or if you vote no, if you vote yes and it goes to referendum and is turned down by the voters, what will then happen? As you know, the town's primary concern has been how to protect Fane Park and protect that park from what might happen in these four areas that are in the county, in a, a county area surrounded by the town, at west of the park. And so that's what this development agreement attend, attempts to do. We know, of course, exactly which parcels we're talking about. But what we don't yet know is exactly which ones might be mined. Most of them have rock on them that could be mined. And so we're still waiting to get a final description and map of those areas. If the government tank process goes forward, those will be the areas that will be conveyed to the town at no cost. And then the rest of it would be retained by the Fanes. It would still be in the county, and they could do other things with it other than mining. Okay? And so if, on the other hand, the government tank doesn't go forward, then those are the areas that will be mined. And we will need to have an idea of what we and APNS and the Fanes can do together to try to mitigate any problems that might happen because that ends up being mined. So that's the whole purpose for the development agreement. I want to explain that there will be three actions that you'll be taking. So on Monday, December eighth, the planning, is it Monday? I'm getting that mixed up. It is Monday. Monday, December eighth, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be holding its hearing. That'll be the second hearing on the General Plan Amendment. At the end of that hearing, they'll make a recommendation to the council about approving that General Plan Amendment. They'll also hold another hearing on the proposed zoning change. And at the end of that hearing, they will make a recommendation to you. Three days later, on December eleventh, Thursday, at your regular meeting, you'll have three different agenda items. The first will be this development agreement. There won't be any hearing on that. You'll consider whether the development agreement should be approved or not. That'll be by resolution. The next will be your own hearing on the General Plan Amendment. You'll have your hearing, and then you'll make a decision one way or another about that General Plan Amendment, and that would be by resolution. The next will be another hearing on the zoning map change. After that hearing, you'll then to decide whether you want to read the ordinance that would cause the rezoning to occur. If you decide to do that, you'll, you'll be given the opportunity to ask that it be read two times. And so it'll be read that first time in that meeting. And then on your January eighth meeting, twenty-twenty-six, that ordinance would be read for the second time, and then you would decide whether to adopt it at that time. And then, of course, the zoning is not effective until thirty days after a, a vote like that. But does that kind of give you some ideas to how the development agreement fits in, in all of this? Now, go ahead.
Well, I don't, this might be, I might be asking this too soon, but you're saying that nothing takes effect for thirty days, except for there's the year-long wait of where they can change their mind.
As part of the development agreement, yes. They, they would still have the opportunity to change their minds even if the approvals have been given.
But they won't do anything for a year?
They would have that year period of time to decide whether they wanted to go forward. Let me not get too far into that, because I know that you'll probably want to ask Mr. Lawley, the attorney for the, the Fanes, maybe about that detail. But I just wanted you to understand the role of the development agreement. You've got in front of you the main points that are in the development agreement. We will finalize it so that on December eleventh, you will have all the maps, and they'll be attached. But I can tell you that the area that would be conveyed to the town, or that might be mined, represent most still of, of the area in those four, those four parcels. Okay? And so I believe, that said, Mr. Lawley, representing the Fane interests, can answer your questions in relation to the things that you see as the main points in the development agreement.
Mr. Lawley, do you have a presentation or anything? Are you just here for questions?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, again, for the record, Bill Lawley with Tiffany Bosco, representing the Fanes. This is your study session. I, I don't want to presume anything. It's been a long day already, I know. And so I can do two things. I can give a little bit of background and overview, or I could just ask, answer questions. It's really your preference.
Let's start with some questions. How's that? How's that? What was your original question from Mr. Legler?
The question that I was asking Ivan was, so you've got a clause in there that the Fanes or APS, I'm not exactly clear, can change their mind at any time prior to a year of approval? Can they go ahead and be mining either or the government tank during that year-long process? Or if they do start, then they're not going to be able to change their mind? Or I just wasn't clear on how that all worked.
Mr. Mayor, councilwoman, I agree with you. It's a great question. So the process is such that we go, we will go through certain hearings. There'll be certain vested items. There'll be a waiting period. Then we're going to go through an appraisal and the potential deed process, hopefully not a referendum process. But we have to build that into sort of what potentially could happen next year. And so we've allowed ourselves, because there are so many unknowns in the process, we've allowed ourselves to give more time after this for, to basically kind of unravel the deal if certain things happen. And so in the meantime, there is some prohibitions in the DA today about forbearance activities, which meaning certainly during the process of this, we are not going to start mining. During a potential referendum process, there would be no activity on, no mining activity on the site. And so I honestly believe that that prohibition is probably going to cover that year of us deciding how to, you know, how to move forward. If we decide to pull back because it gets referred or whatever, then there's already a prohibition from using the sites in an interim and then change our mind later and cancel the agreement, so to speak. So I believe the language today prevents us from doing, I think, what you're scared of or concerned about, which is start operations on the site even though there's approvals and then kind of cancel the deal and say, no, we're not going to do the deal, we're not going to give the land. So I believe that there's language in here that prevents that.
Councilman Lopez, or I'm sorry, councilwoman Lopez and councilman Freud, you have any questions or comment?
I do not. Thank you.
Councilman Freud?
I do not. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So Lawley, and I'm also going to ask the same question of Mr. Davidson because I think it's important that we provide the public a little background information. So my question to both of you is, how did we get to this point? And so if you can answer, again, from both perspectives, I'd like to hear both. But how did we get to this point?
Mayor and vice mayor, great question. It really is. And so it is well stated in your staff report, but I think it's worth repeating today for the public. The staff report goes through historical steps of what's happened. And I'll even go back a little further and I'll try to be brief and give Ivan a little bit of time. But Ivan's done a great job and I want to take a moment to say that it's been a pleasure working with Ivan. He's working on the weekends, trying to get all of the details done on this. The lack of finite exhibits are on us because we're trying to get legal descriptions of exactly the properties. Real quick on that, we're probably looking at 80 acres in the green, which would be the donated land versus 40 acres over a government tank. So it's going to be a two-to-one type of comparison. But let's go back 30 years. 30 years ago, the Fane Park was donated to the town. At that same time, mining activities happened on the east side on about a 300-acre property. There was rock harvesting, processing, all of the activities were happening there. Contemplating a phase-two rock harvesting operation on really the property that we're talking about today, the West Fane Park, 80 acres. In 2021, there was a right-of-way permit that was granted to allow for the operator to basically take trucks from one side to the other and go through what would be considered the Fane Park property to stay off the roadways. You know, see if we can stay off the roadways with the trucks. First permit was approved, the permit wasn't acted on, so it expired. In 2022, permit was asked, applied for. The town changed their mind and said, you know, we're not going to approve that connection. And instead, would you go look for another site? So this really all started in 2022 when the town came to the Fane family and said, we prefer you not operate there. We know you have the rights and I know you're even contemplating it. We approved once upon a time a drive to connect the two, but can you go find another location? And so for a while, for about a year, the APNS and the Fane family went out looking for a new site. Now, a couple of categories. It's got to have the same type of rock. It's got to be in close proximity because hauling cost of the rock drives up the price. And so when the operator has to add a lot of price and then they have to submit a bid to a government who's going to take the lowest bid, they have to make sure that they're going to be competitive. And so those were the two things in the local area, have the rock. But more, secondly, or maybe thirdly, which is, how can we stay off the roads with our trucks? And so we wanted to try and to find some property where the ingress and egress would be mainly on Fane property. So those are the three categories. Found that property. 2023 happened, we filed an application. There were some problems with that application, some legal processes that went through. We could get into it if you care, but it's nicely explained in the memo and the staff report. That got paused, that application was stale. 2025 came along. During 2024, the Fanes and APNS was readying to move over here. The town came to us and said, hey, would you take one more stab at this property? Can you, instead of a minor amendment, can you file for a major amendment? And oh, by the way, I think we're going to want you to donate the property to us. And so then that changed everything in terms of the need for this development agreement. So typically, we would come to you and we'd say, nothing about this property. We'd say, let's just rezone government tank and we're going to go to government tank. That would be in front of you for a GPA and a zoning. And we wouldn't have a development agreement in front of you. It wasn't until the town says, hey, why don't we put this guarantee or this commitment that you've made to the community not to mine this in a document approved by all of us? And so that's really why we're here today, is there was a request by the town to say, put your money where your mouth is and work on a development agreement with us that guarantees that if you get what you need, that you will no longer mine on the site and in fact, you'll give it to us. And so that's where the development agreement idea came from. And I think it's a good idea because it ratifies the commitment. Ivan maybe has a slightly different.
Yeah, I want to just ask a few follow-up questions. The current excavation pit gravel pit processing plant, that has been in existence for how long, sir?
So the early 1980s.
I've heard 1983, is that, was that, would that be accurate?
That, you've got the gentleman behind me. If they're nodding their heads, then that sounds accurate.
And then I know there's been a lot of concerns about explosives. How many, I think I've heard this too, I just want to confirm. How many times in the last 20 years, just throwing out a number, even 30 years? How many, how many times have explosives been used in the current pit?
Mr. Mayor and vice mayor, I've also heard our operator say that there's been one event since they've been operating over the last 20 years.
Can you talk to us about the current rights to mine gravel on either side of Stone Ridge?
Correct, Mr. Mayor and vice mayor. So the map shows you today where the excavation pit is. What it doesn't show you is that those lands are in unincorporated Yavapai County. So they are not in the town limits. So 40-plus years, 40-plus years ago, all of the property, actually, prior to even the dedication of the Fane Park land had been approved and started operating in the county through state permits to allow for mining on both properties. So there was always anticipated 320-acre site to the east, 80-acre-ish site to the west was always going to be in the county as an operating site. I think legally, my opinion is that they have the legal rights to go there today and start turning dirt on the West Fane property. There are public roadways that bisect the property. We would have to work with you and the city to make sure that that's a safe connection. But I think the legal rights are vested.
One more question. In terms of costs, and I can just throwing this out there because I've heard numerous things. I imagine it would be a lot less money since they have the rights right now to mine both sides of Stone Ridge Drive. That'd be a less expensive option than going to government tank. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and vice mayor, it's 100% correct. You know, so if you think about the proximity and the hauling cost, the trucks and the rocks, it's very expensive to haul. I've heard our partner operator say that they have spent millions more hauling rock from the Chino Valley site to process here. So not only is there a hauling cost that goes on top of it, because we're talking about four and a half miles on a dirt road. We got to build the dirt road. We have to build, it's got to be an all-weather road for your emergency management folks. So we're building a road, extra hauling cost. And then we're spending a lot more time and effort to water and maintain that road. And we'll be doing some improvements on Old Black Canyon as well. And so incredibly expensive and a very large delay to do all of that. Thank you.
Councilman Greer?
You were saying that you needed a certain kind of rock. And that's not just on any open space around. You had to find the right kind of rock. And so there really isn't a third option. We have two options. We either have government tank or we have Fane. That's it. So people can stop talking about a third option. There's not one. Thank you.
Councilman McKeel?
Yeah, and so I did, I did go to some of the, you know, we had some spokespeople out talking to the community about mines and I did attend a couple of those. And one of the things that we were told at that meeting is that the land would be donated. But this looks like it might be donated. It's wrapped up in future property tax or something like that. The town, I saw, you know, we're going to have to make quarterly payments if a property tax should become in effect. And I've heard, you know, concern, is that legal to do all of this? Can you answer that?
I can't, absolutely, and mayor, councilwoman. So the donation is not contingent on a payment. The donation would be given based on an appraisal that will happen. So the donation will happen to the town. And then there's a contingency. If you and the voters of Prescott Valley approve a future new property tax, then that future property tax could be abated for Fane properties up to the appraised value of this land. And so it is a potential, but it's not a for sure. So a lot of times, I've done this for about 20 years. And we do these economic development agreements a lot in different cities. And we'll go into a city and a city will say, I want a thing. I either want your land, or I want you to build a Safeway, or I want you to build this job-producing use. In order for you to come, entice you to do that, we're going to automatically start giving you rebates of the existing tax, the sales tax, property tax, TPT tax. A lot of the various taxes rebate some of the fees in order for you to come to my city and do this. And so those development agreements, I've probably done 20 over the years. And the Goldwater Institute looks at those and they say, does that trigger a gift tax violation? The gift tax is in the Constitution. It says, first of all, one, governments can't give away something that's owned by the people. In this case, it's tax dollars, right? Future tax dollars. And they can't give it away, and they can give it away as long as the value that they're giving away is not more than the value that they're receiving. And so a lot of the cities will then go into a little bit more of analysis of the benefit of what we're getting, that fries or that new job-producing thing or even that piece of land is going to produce this. And then we're going to give away this. And it's got to equal. In this case, you potentially will be, would be on the hook for potentially rebating a potential tax in the future only up to the value of the assessed value of the land that you get. So it's almost different. We're giving you the gift in exchange for a potential reimbursement in the future. And it would almost be the same as if we said, hey, city, do you want to buy our million-dollar piece of property? And you said, yeah, I'm going to go get city tax dollars and we're going to buy your piece of property. In this case, we hope you never pay us a dime. We hope that no new property tax is ever approved by the voters in PV and we never see a dime. And we think that's probably likely, you know, given the sort of voter preferences in Prescott Valley, that there probably won't be a new property tax in the near future. But if one happens, you will be able at that point to say, okay, we're going to pass a new tax. And now we know what the rebate to the Fane is because we have that appraisal. We have the land. So now we can calculate over the next 20 years what that property tax is going to pay rebated. As opposed to if we entered into an agreement today that says, you need to start the day we give you the land, please start rebating us current taxes today. Because then you'd be like, wow, okay, next year's budget is going to get hit right away and the year after that. So we have to do some quick forecasting. What we're saying is, in the future, you will have a number. And it's the exact number, the value that you're getting and the citizens are getting, and it can't exceed that. It can never exceed that. It can't exceed it from the language of the DA. And legally, it can't exceed it. The other sort of, I guess, element in here is, in most development agreement, you have a separation clause. So let's say this gets approved, we move forward, everything happens, you get the land. And then someone sues and said, I don't think that's legal. And the courts say, you can't give your tax to them. Well, guess what? The courts can say, you can't give them the tax. But it doesn't unravel the entire development agreement. You can sever out that element of the development agreement that is deemed illegal and the rest of the development agreement can move forward. And so the risk is really on us. The illegality of the risk is on us in order, if a court in the future says, no, you can't do that, it's violation of the gift clause in the Constitution, you got to get rid of that section. Well, we've probably already given you the land. And there's no protections in here to say, oh, now we get the land back because a court decided that that was illegal. So there, all of the risk is on us in terms of whether we ever get dime one rebated back from the town or whether a court, future court says, no, we don't think so. And so we believe that we've tried to do the right thing in terms of giving the city as much protection as possible. There's also some sections in here that talk about, even if this falls apart, you guys deny it, it goes to referendum. We go back to Stone Ridge or Lake Shore, um, Lake Shore, Stone Ridge. There are protections in here that says, you guys actually have more regulation on what we're doing there than you would have today. So you actually win. If all of this falls apart and we spend all this time, energy and money to go through this process for a second time, and let's say it gets referred and we don't rescind it, you actually get back a better position because you have more regulatory control over the mining operation on the Fane property or the Lake Shore property. I keep saying Lake Shore, I apologize. The West Fane property. So that was something that was hard to give up. It was a little bit, you know, hey, remnant regulation, but we thought it was fair.
I'm sorry, go ahead, may I give more? So all of what you just talked about for the last 10 minutes would mean that a council would have to vote to put a property tax to the voters of Prescott Valley. And then the voters of Prescott Valley would then have to vote to tax themselves. Who here thinks that would happen? So the likelihood, in my opinion, is, I mean, we spent 10 minutes talking about it on something that probably will never even be addressed. Councilman?
I did want to address one thing as well. There's a lot of fear about the using explosives. And people know what they know, but most people don't know what using explosives really means. They're imagining like when they use explosives to fall down an avalanche in snow country and you see the big, huge rush of all the snow or a rock slide. Or I think they're even thinking that the A-bomb is about to be dropped right there. Because I keep hearing and I've seen pictures of it, of big bombs going off and dust in the sky and the earth moving. And when I went out to this site, I was driving with one of the Fane brothers and we had to stop because there was cattle in the road. And, or in the area where we drove, there's no road out there, but where we were driving through. And we stopped and we had a chat and I said, so do you move the cattle? And then I noticed with the cattle, there was a bunch of pronghorn mixed in with them. And I thought, those are pretty smart pronghorn because they're being protected by the cattle. And they said, no, they don't move them. And they are cattlemen. This is what they do for a living. This is what they do for a living. And so that's their precious entity, and they don't move them. And then they said, well, if they don't like the ongoing sound or vibration of the machinery going on, or the trucks moving in and out, they move, they just move to another area. So if they're not worried about what is existing there that is their investment, we need to get past that fear of what an explosion is going to entail. Because usually they drill down, they put the explosive very deep into the ground because they're fracking it, basically. They're loosening the dirt, they're making it so that they can access the larger pieces or slabs of granite that they're trying to come for. So I'm just trying to say that a lot of, I want to say fear mongering has been going on because this has been a contention that I think people can't get past their fear. So we know what we know. And I think that once this comes about, like you said, they're probably even going to only blast maybe once or up to, I believe there was an agreement at one point of saying four times within a year. So I just, I just kind of wanted to make that point, that it's not going to be the lavender pit, it's not going to be a massive hole left in the, in the earth. They're going to take down a mountain. They took down mountains, putting in Granville. I remember we would drive by and think, there's going to be housing, and it's too rounded, it's too, you know, how are they going to put house? Well, they just leveled the land out right there. People that live in those houses don't remember the mountain. They're not missing it. It's a beautiful community, and then people got what they wanted out of it. So I just kind of wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, staff, if they, if they can, to also elaborate on how, you know, how did we get to this point?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor, yeah, I mean, Mr. Lally did an excellent job kind of highlighting that history. It really comes down to two primary things. The first was, you know, the protection of the town communities, our park, Fane Park, which is a beloved open space area for all of Prescott Valley and beyond. I think a lot of people, when they think of Fane Park, obviously, there's the water, but probably most residents are thinking of the, you know, the beautiful wooded, vegetated areas around it that have trails and whatnot on it. There's mining, you know, historic mining equipment displays. All of that is on private property, Fane property. And those are the areas that would be mined. And so that was what was at stake, is really trying to make sure that we protect the park. The second is, in the, you know, working with the Fanes to find an alternate location, somewhere that was further from existing homes. Because the current, you know, West Fane Park site puts it immediately adjacent to Victorian Estates and then additional Stone Ridge homes. And so trying to move it to a different location actually increased the distance that this site would be to any existing type of home. So those were the two, two primary reasons.
Councilwoman?
Just one more question. Originally, I think in 2021, I think that it was, it was asked to just mine, I think it was site 103-08-076A, which has now been split into a B and a C. But why, why were all the other ones added in? You know, there's like five different parcel numbers that are added in this time. What, what changed there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I think over the years, they've looked at where the rock is and done more assessments of where the rock is. And so we recently have had to do our own assessment because we've been asked, is it, I may have even said one of our first neighborhood meetings, I think we're going to donate 40 acres, and we're going to zone 40 acres. And I was told by the applicant, no, I think we're going to give more than that. And so we had to spend some more time pulling together the parcel maps, figure out where the rock is, where there isn't rock, and trying to figure out, you know, are we going to get more than 40 acres? And so what you see here today is roughly about 80 acres, this green area. I don't have the parcel numbers on here, and I think you do have a map. But over the years, what we've tried to, or over the last few months, the confusion was, what lands does the city, the town want? And they kept saying, hey, and Ivan has pushed me, hey, this, this, this looks like it might be on the table for you guys to give to us. What, you know, are you going to give this? And so we had to continue to assess which lands. And so I think we're up to about an 80 acre gift. And, and that's why, and I do apologize, the exhibits aren't attached. Certainly, I would never come to a voting hearing without anything, you know, finalized, and you should never vote on anything that's finalized. We're going to make a commit to get that to you ASAP and make sure that all the exhibits are in there so that you know exactly what parcels, exact parcels, or portions of exact parcels are going to be in the DA.
That would be great.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if you can, maybe just, let me just leave you with a couple, a couple of things that were mentioned today, if I could.
Oh, yes.
There were, there were a couple of concerns about the legality of the gift clause, how to analyze the gift clause. And, and again, Mr. Hathaway is a very smart attorney. I've been doing this specifically for 20 years. And so the valuation of the land to be zoned is never accounted in any sort of gift clause. If it were, every city who rezones property would then have to go, gosh, did we just give a gift away and didn't get anything back because we enhanced the value on their piece of property that we zoned today? That's not how you do it. The gift clause is, we municipality are going to give something away, a tax. We have to get something back. And the something that they're getting back is the value of the donated land. So that's how the state constitution looks at it. Give and get. It isn't, oh, and let's also throw in some value of land that the city on a separate action rezoned, and so they have an upside value. Well, every piece of property that gets rezoned has an upside value. So you're giving a gift to every single applicant every time they're here. And so that's not how you do it. I think Ivan and I worked very carefully to make sure that this is a very, very legal document. There was also a concept thrown out tonight that, well, there's a lot of may's in there. And, you know, I would point to you, to the section where we talk about what we have to do in terms of, we've got to do this, and they can't have, you know, this type of lighting, and they can't have this kind of blasting. If you look at those five sections, all of them say may. Or no, they all say shall, not may. They say shall. You shall do this. You can't do this. You can't build a new well. You can't have more than this blasting. And so your staff has held us accountable. There's no loosey goosey language in here that allows us to not honor the commitment that's in this contract. So those are just a couple of things that were thrown out tonight that I, I don't want you to leave tonight to feel like that those were sort of, you know, where we are on it. But, but do appreciate your time, and sorry, I butted in there if you had any other questions.
Councilman Froyd, Councilwoman Lopez, you have anything after this discussion has been had?
I do not.
Councilman?
I, I would say that there are a good arguments on both sides of the coin here. I have, I have some concerns about this bailout clause. It, it's kind of reminiscent of how the town got into the Findlay Toyota Center fiasco, where we're now on the hook for a whole lot for years to come. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilman Schumacher?
So basically, too, a lot of this land that we're talking about, people have used for years for the trails, so they've been trespassing, correct? So we could illuminate that part. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, so this will also protect the Valley of Lights for always being able to be where they're at now. So that, that helps out the Chamber of Commerce in one of their big fundraising events of the year as well. And there's so many people who come to our town for the Valley of Lights, and I enjoy it. I know a lot of my friends have gone through it already, too. And so this will give us that protection of being able to continue it on and/or enhance other things that are going on down at Fane Park. So I appreciate that, too, as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, let me just, the Valley of Lights would have always stayed with us. It has nothing to do with this. No, that, that's to the east. These are areas to the west. I just want to share that with you. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Lally, I wish we weren't here talking gravel pits, right, or mines. We all agree on that. I at least think we can all agree on that. But the reality is, we are talking about it. And I spent the last several weeks over in Mr. Perryman's neighborhood in Stone Ridge, talking to residents that live in Prescott Valley and hearing what they have to say, hearing what their thoughts are. And I think that's important. And on face value, we think as a council, this is a real difficult decision, but all of our decisions are pretty easy, right? You set up a pros and cons list. You list what are the pros, what are going to benefit the town of Prescott Valley as a whole, and you match it up to the cons. And that's really what it comes down to. So I appreciate your time. I'm sure we'll see you next week, and I look forward to voting. Thank you. Folks, thanks for coming out. That's all we got.